Welcome to another meeting of the Lorain County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorain County Community College Education Station. The Lorain County Commissioners urgently invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorain County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Aliri. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
It's right on top of you like a halo. Oh, boy. We're in trouble.
It's a halo.
Good morning and welcome to the December 6th meeting of the Lorain County Board of Commissioners. My wonderful calendar for today says, "In the field of observation, chance favors the prepared mind." The author of this statement is Louis Pasteur. Ms. Clerk.
Under Resolutions, number one, Human Services bills.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Basie.
Aye.
Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
2.1 percent. That's my only comment, 2.1 percent. Blew my mind.
Aye.
Ms. Basie.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Basie.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
I had a lot of questions on those transfers.
I'll second.
Okay. There's a lot of computer items on here. Ron, I think I'm going to refer a couple of these questions to you. You have a transfer for $40,000 for furniture, but I didn't see any prices. Maybe you should have gotten some quotes before requesting the transfer.
If I may respond, thank you, Commissioner, and that's a very appropriate comment. This has to do with our moving into the 216 Third Street location, and it's for equipment purchases. We are in the process of getting quotes right now for the equipment that we're considering. I just wanted, given the end of the year and looking at the schedule to make the transfer and open purchase orders up, I wanted to put the transfer in this week. By next week, we will have the quotations in, and we will do it through a purchase order process, and so you'll be given an opportunity at that point to say yes to the specific items and the purchase orders. But if I didn't have the money there in place, then there was no point in getting prices for the potential equipment that we might need.
Okay, that just seemed like it's a little bit reversed. I think we should have had the prices so that we know how much you needed to transfer.
I appreciate that.
And then there was another one here. Like, some of these transfers really don't match the requests. Like, some of these computers. I mean, I didn't add them up, and I didn't want to take a lot of time this morning, but I'm asking that maybe we hold these until we get some of my questions answered, because the requisitions are for, some are for more than what the transfers are for.
May we see what you're talking about? Since I didn't make copies of those transfers.
Yeah.
I do have copies of the requisitions, but I...
And even, I guess if I may, the way I would respond to that, Commissioner, is there are some existing computers that need to be software updates.
Right.
And so, we've transferred more money, and the purchase order requisition is for some of the software upgrade for, I think there were three computers that don't have some of the access and PowerPoint that need to be upgraded, so part of that's that.
Yeah, there was four. There was four that need to be upgraded, and you're going to purchase four more for new employees.
That goes with the purchase order.
But the figures didn't match. Like, I didn't write notes because I just didn't have time.
The $40,000, that's not including what you want for the computers.
Correct. That's a different transfer.
Right.
The computer transfer, you have to look at the time schedule of when we submitted that to budget or purchasing, and we felt that there was enough latitude in there. Again, it's not, in my opinion, and maybe I'm wrong on this, it's not, in my opinion, how much I'm transferring to cover a purchase order that I need to open. What's critical is the purchase order. I wanted to make sure that I was requesting a large enough transfer to buy the equipment and software that I needed. If we do transfer a larger amount than what we're buying in software or hardware, we are only going to open a purchase order for the amount that we're going to spend. The other money will remain in that account even though it's been transferred and will close out at the end of this year. I didn't want to transfer an amount and then find out that I was $120 short.
Well, that's what...
I'd rather be, you know, a couple of hundred or even $1,000 longer in my transfer. So that's what my intent was in doing this.
Well, that's what my concern was, that these figures didn't match.
Right.
And you may be short if we don't adjust the figures before we vote on it.
I do not believe that I will be short. We have money that exists in the account already, and we tried to add that to that so that we didn't end up short. If I had $500 in an account and needed $3,000, I only transferred maybe $2,800 rather than just $25 or the full $3,000.
Any other comments, Commissioner Basie?
Yeah, there was. Okay, and there's another one for contract services. And this is additional appropriation needed to cover the cost of Internet services. I don't know what that's for.
Where's the signature on it?
Well, that's what I'm looking for. It's four of 11. Or you see a signature.
Oh, no, that's what we didn't vote on last week, remember?
Oh, that's that one, right.
That's a credit payment, yeah.
Right.
That's what Jim...
Yeah, this is the one we passed the resolution to go with, to do this with one of the, a different company. And all of a sudden, we're paying this company, and that resolution covered that we were going to go with this other company from September, starting in September, and now we're being billed by this other company from September to December.
What was that, number 11?
This was four of 11.
On the transfer?
Transfer? No, appropriation. Oops, sorry, I should have did that under appropriation.
Four of 11 is transferred.
Well, what is this?
You have a transfer and appropriation.
This is an appropriation.
You're looking at the board week from the 29th.
Okay, where'd I put that one?
I think that was 11.
Yeah, here, this must be it. That's $6,000, capital improvement.
Oh.
But there was so many this, today, that...
Mm-hmm.
Well, at least they're numbered. That's a start in the right direction.
Which one was that? Do you have it?
The four of 11 I have is Children's Families Council Fund, an appropriation or reduce appropriations.
Are there some that I need?
This is the... There you go. Let me look real quick.
Four of 23?
No, no, it's the one for Erie Shores. Fifty-one hundred.
I don't have a copy of it, it's got to be in there.
Well, that's a segue into another discussion. Do I have that right now, or do you want to wait till the...
Well, it's under the transfers, I believe, so we're talking about...
It's not in here.
It's in the... What would that be, Jim? Would that be under transfers? Would that have been, that fifty-one hundred? Was that, do you remember? Well, you got last, what was last week?
But this is last week's.
What was it, appropriation?
Fifty-one hundred, right.
It's under appropriations.
This last week it was.
Yeah, but we didn't vote on it, but it's still under appropriation.
Well, we've already voted on the appropriations.
Yeah. Okay, that's where it's at, it's under appropriations.
But there's something wrong. I'd like to know what happened.
What was your question, Commissioner?
The question is, since we had a resolution to go with whatever company that was, why are we...
First Interstate.
What was it?
First Communication.
First Communication.
I got the first.
Well, Ernie's here to address that problem. Last week, you had some concerns that you requested information on. I provided you the information I had at that time. It wasn't as detailed as your questions were, and I said that I would have Ernie Smith come to this meeting to explain his position on that matter. He is here, and he is prepared to do so, so why don't we have him come to the podium and discuss it?
Ernie Smith, our new IT Director. Good morning, Ernie.
Okay, why don't we give a little seg... Yeah, oh, yeah. Let's give a little segue. It should be in there. Under appropriations. I hate to cut you off on this one. I had looked at it, signed it up, and I already know where it's at.
The fifty-one hundreds was on the POs.
Was that where it was?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Requisitions?
Thank you.
Requisitions.
Okay.
We haven't got to that thing.
Well, let's introduce, should we, let's introduce Ernie, let him talk, but we're looking at paper.
Sounds good.
Have you found it, Madam Clerk?
On the requisitions.
Under Commissioners.
It is the requisitions, here it is.
What page, please, Teresa?
One. It's number 2351. I like requisitions. Thank you.
It's not there yet.
Right. Okay. All right, we know where we are, Ernie.
Not exactly. Ernie, go ahead and introduce yourself, and then let's talk to the issue of First Communications and where we're at with that, okay?
Ernie Smith, Information Technology Director. Exactly what did you want me to address?
Why is it that we had a resolution to go to First Communication for this service? And the resolution was to cover, it started in September, and then we're getting billed here from another company for the same service, starting in September till December. And the amount was like for $5,000?
We're still using the service from Erie Shores, the current vendor. The First Communications project, I found several issues with, and I stopped the project to evaluate and make sure it was complete and find out exactly where we were with it. There were several issues with First Communications that needed to be addressed, and I don't believe the information presented to the board, when that resolution was passed, was full or accurate.
Well, I think the board should have been informed. It's been several months, and I think we should have been informed right off the bat, because we did have a resolution to go with that company. And then, to get a bill from another company is kind of surprising when we don't know what's going on. Why was this, why did this happen?
The project was not workable the way that I inherited it. There were several issues that compounded themselves as time went along, and my newness to my position and understanding the procedures that was involved, it took me some time to get in a position to be able to address the subject properly. There were several issues with the First Communications project that I had to deal with. And eventually, as I stated, the issues continued to compound themselves, so I made the decision to stop the project so I could step back and reassess all the issues to present a full picture.
Do you have the full picture now?
Yes, I do.
And that is?
There is no, there's no reason for the county to move that service outside of Lorain County.
Why?
Why?
It works fine right where it's at.
Why? How?
It's been up and running for some time now, and there's been zero issues or zero documented issues handed to me with any problems. There's not a problem with the current service, and there was several problems with the intended move. It's not as simple as just picking a new vendor and just saying, "We're going to go with the new..."
Well, I understand that, and we had all the facts before, and that's why we moved on the issue, and that's why there was a resolution for it.
We moved on.
And now I still don't have any answers. I still don't have any reasons.
We were moving because we're going to save $200 a month, correct? That's why I voted for it.
It was, I'm not fully aware of all the issues that...
We're paying what, $1,200 a month right now, correct?
We were paying $1,200.
We were paying?
The vendor has redone his prices. We now are able to enjoy a $276 per month decrease in cost for the same service. There is a...
How much would it cost us to switch, then? Do you know? Because I was told that it wasn't going to cost us anything.
The whole project involves more than just a T-1 service, it's the email services, moving the email in-house, eventually bringing web servers in-house. Well, the understanding of the board, it's my belief that the understanding of the board was that it wasn't going to cost anything, and my figures are getting pretty close to $50,000 to bring the email service in-house.
And that's why you stopped it?
Yes.
Now, where are we at on this? We got a contract that we signed, we have a resolution that we passed.
Did we sign the contract?
And I need some facts and figures.
Jerry shaking his head, no.
The resolution was passed, the resolution or contract was never sent to the vendor. I clarified that with the vendor. I spoke with the vendor, and as time went on, the project was going along with First Communications, but misinformation and just generally being unaware of the background, the problems compounding themselves, I stopped it and took a step back. It's my recommendation that the T-1 Internet service is not moved out of the county, stays right where it is, and we now have the option to sign a new agreement with Erie Shores that is not binding anymore than we keep the service as long as we want, we pay for it as we use it. There's no one, two, or three-year commitment. We just sign a new agreement and start paying the new price, which is $276 per month cheaper.
Please, by...
There's no problems with the service. I've had formal and informal meetings with assistance managers, and everyone is fine. And it's a general consensus that there's not a problem with the existing service, and therefore, I see no reason to move it.
Well, that's something that you should have brought to our attention before. No offense, and I understand that you're new, but you don't have the authority to make these decisions. That authority sits right here. And before these decisions are made, it should come before us, and especially when there was a resolution authorizing certain actions.
I didn't take steps to kill the project. I stopped the project so I could understand what I was working with.
But you had no authority to stop the project, is what I'm telling you. The authority stands right here.
Well, the project could move forward as it stands right now, and now that I'm comfortable with the details, but I did not know what I was working with, the issues continue to compound themselves. I kept finding rumors and misinformation involved in the project, and I didn't know what I was working with until I had a chance to step back and take a look at the whole project.
Okay, so now what do we do? We have a resolution that's out there. We have, do we have to revisit this? Maybe when, if Ernie can put together some spreadsheets on where we're at and where, what we can do? What would be the best way?
And I want to know what the problem has been. What's the problem with these two different companies? Why is it best to go with one other than the other? Give us some answers, and give us some prices.
Well, that's what I'm saying, wouldn't it be better to say?
The new price for Erie Shores is $999 per month.
I need it in black and white.
Yvonne has the paperwork on that.
Okay, what's the best way to resolve this, Jim?
Well, we grafted with the First Communication issue for some time and the Erie Shores issue. Obviously, we want to choose the service that's most effective for the county.
Now, let's back up. I voted yes because we're saving $200 a month, and it wasn't going to cost us any money. Now I'm hearing it's going to cost us money. Can I see it, like Commissioner Basie says, in black and white, what it's going to cost us to transfer and do what was the original intent?
Okay.
Since I was misinformed? And then we can evaluate what Erie Shores now saying, because we're going to go elsewhere. Now they're knocking off $276 off their price, so if it doesn't cost us anything to move, then I'd like to see, this is where we're at today. And now, are we going to have any legal issues if we back out on something that we already passed a resolution on?
Okay.
I like to see the pros and cons and all that, and then...
You have a multi...
Well, nothing's easy. That's what I'm saying.
Well, you have two or three issues, so let me address them.
This is what you're looking for, this is getting it all down, and then we can...
Let me address them.
Next week.
Let me address them individually. First, I'll have a...
You're not listening to the question.
No, I'm not saying, do you want to, I'd rather not have it continue. I'd rather see it all written down in black and white, bring it back. I think, I think you know what my intent is. I think that's similar to what you wanted, right?
Right.
I mean, would that be...
Well, that's what I was going to respond. I'm going to have a position paper prepared.
Okay, good.
Contrasting and comparing all services, certainly.
That's tomorrow.
Okay, Monday.
It'll be done by the end of day today. Mr. Smith will take care of that. As to the legality issue, Mr. Anis has been involved in that, and I think, believe he's prepared to speak on that issue now.
Well, does he want to talk about it now? Would you rather wait and see, put it in print format?
Well, I think he wants to tell us that there's no illegality. Is that what you want to tell us, too?
Well, when we passed the resolution, my understanding is the contract has never been signed, so there is no legal obligation at this point. It's also my understanding that First Communication is aware of that, so there's not a problem there. Commissioner Basie is right, you have a pending resolution which is telling your staff to proceed with this, so if you want to hold it and take a further look at it, then you probably should at least pass a resolution to put the previous resolution on hold until you have a chance to get the information.
Is that necessary?
I mean, especially if we're going to make a decision next Thursday?
Especially since one precedes the other, and we haven't finalized the contract.
As long as it's clear to, I mean, technically, you have an order out there to your staff to proceed with this contract, so as long as your staff is comfortable with that.
What would the county administrator like to say?
Well, I'd like to know, obviously, you feel you don't have complete information, so let's defer the issue with the understanding that we'll proceed next week, and we'll have the information available, and we'll resolve it completely next week.
So I would move to hold the other one, the other resolution?
No, what resolution, Mary Jo, please? We already have a motion on the floor to approve the transfers under item number four.
In a second.
I'm sorry, in a second. So, do we want to get rid of that issue so we can talk about any new motions?
Yeah, this issue doesn't have anything to do with the transfers that are under consideration.
But I want to complete that business.
Right.
I don't want to complicate this issue. We haven't voted on the transfers yet. You had several questions. Those questions were discussed.
As for the transfers, no, I think the rest are all under the requisitions.
Okay, so then, Madam Clerk, you call the role on the transfers, please.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Basie. Aye, with the exception of page four. That was a transfer. And what was page five? Page five was the $40,000 for Community Development Department. Okay, I know. Make an exception on that.
What's that, four of 11?
This is five of 23.
Oh, and four of 23 is that?
And four of 23 is $6,612 for capital improvements.
I want to make sure I got the right numbers.
Now, page 11, that was the election board. Four of 11? Oh, page 11 is what I have written down. Oh, page 11. I just had a real quick question for John. John, that was for the election board, I believe. Is that it?
It was the salaries, it was like $9,000 for salaries, or something like that. Nope, that's not it.
Okay, that might be the requisition. Well, this is Board of Elections for the county. $9,000. 11 of 23.
What exactly does it say on it?
That's a 23, it's a $9,000.
$9,000 to place money into booth work or payroll to satisfy payroll from general election 2001.
That's not an appropriation to transfer, right?
It's transfer, correct.
They're just transferring their money from various accounts to meet their obligations, so it's not any additional funding from the general fund.
All right, thanks. And then that was the only exception, only, there was two exceptions, right? Four of 23 and five of 23. Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And the answers?
Do we have any?
I don't believe so, no.
I don't see any.
Okay, so that's nothing then. All right, then, we're going to move on to item number six, which is the requisitions.
Right. Here we go with those.
All right.
Twenty-three fifty-one.
I'll move for approval.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, now we have discussions.
Now we got to talk.
All right.
Well, it's 23. I wrote it down, too.
Twenty-three fifty-one?
Is that good?
That's for Internet service for the months of September, October, and November, which have already been...
That was the one we just discussed.
Yes, that have already been provided.
Okay, now we're back to you, Jimmy.
Okay. Let me try to explain it from this point. We've already used this service, we have to pay for it.
That's not the issue. The issue is, what do we do? Would you rather just have us just answer these questions, or do we need to do a resolution to put the one on hold, or would you rather just wait a week?
I think another week is not going to convolute this issue any further. It's already overly complicated. We will simplify it by next week, so let's just leave that issue shit to be resolved.
You don't want a resolution. You can resolve this by next Thursday.
You get the information to us, and we'll resolve it. How's that?
Thank you. Because I could resolve it right now, so we'll get you the information, and you can resolve it next week.
No, I won't. Let's just get it written, okay?
Okay.
So, that'll be taken care of, but as far as Erie Shores goes, that's a bill.
All right.
Yeah, we, I think we understand.
Our service has already been provided.
Yeah, the issue is just, let's just get all the facts so we can decide on whether or not to change the resolution or continue with the resolution. That's, we have to make a decision on next Thursday, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, that was that one. And then, 2344, which is the Chamber, and I just want to voice my opinion on that. Now that we have the Economic Development Department staffed up, I mean, it's really beefed up good, we should do plenty with that Economic Development Department, and I don't think we should be paying the Chamber this kind of money. To me, the Chamber is a membership for businesses, which is great for them, but I don't think that we get the services that we need from them. So that's just my opinion on that one. And then, now this, 2349, Exchange Server. Ernie, can you explain that to me? What is it? It's for $8,242.
That is the server to run the thing, yes.
But I thought we were going, we had this service with the $5,000.
No, the $5,000 Erie Shore bill, I believe, is a quarterly bill to supply the T-1 Internet service. The Exchange Server is the actual piece of hardware that will run the email system.
This is for the router? Don't we already have one? How are we getting email now if we need a Exchange Server, if we have to buy one?
The emails that we're using right now is being hosted by Erie Shores as part of the service.
Right.
To bring the email, a professional email system in-house managed by the commissioner, you know, managed by myself for the commissioners, I'm recommending a purchase of a $8,300 server to run the email system and the appropriate licensing.
Right now, all of our information's being held outside this building?
Yes.
By a private company, correct?
Erie Shores is managing the individual mailboxes at their location.
If we go with the other company in Akron, would we have to buy this either way?
Yes.
So no matter what, whether, where they win?
To bring the service in-house, we need to buy a new server.
So if we want to control our own email system, if we go with, I just want to take it, we're making a decision next week, no matter what, we're going to have to buy this, correct?
Yes.
Okay. If we want to control the emails and have the files in-house instead of off-site.
Correct.
We don't have a router now?
The Exchange Server and router are two different pieces of equipment.
All right, then this Exchange Server, where, exactly what does it do? I don't understand.
It will run the email program.
It'll run the program?
Yes.
For the entire county?
Yes.
Not just for our department?
Correct, for the entire county. Everyone will have the lorcny.com email address available to them.
And we won't need the service of an outside provider?
We will still need, we will still need the monthly T1 Internet service. We still have to pay for that pipe to the Internet. The Exchange Server and the email is a different, it's a different thing. It's actually a piece of hardware that runs the email service that will work across the T1 pipe that we need to pay for every month anyway.
Will we have to change our email addresses? Why's it a little technical?
Well, Ernie, I think that we answer that as no, because they're using lorcny now and will continue to use our domain name for our email, correct?
Well, I would like to see eventually everyone have lorcny.com email address available to them. What the individual decides to use is their professional email address, it's up to them.
Right, but I think what Commissioner Blair was asking, if she's using the lorcny.com now, that will still be available to her once the service-
Yes, yes, there'll be no interruptions.
I think that's what you're asking, Commissioner Blair?
I think it is.
Yes, it is?
Okay, thank you.
Because each commissioner has that right now and they, and then, well, some have it right now and are using it, so you don't want to lose that because you've been distributing that address to your constituents and that still will be available, that'll be your email address.
There's currently a jumble of email addresses being used by various departments. Everyone will have the same lorcny.com address available to them to use when we are able to host it in-house. It's available to them now, but being hosted by Erie Shores.
All right, I think I understand, thank you.
Okay, and are there any vendors within the county?
Yes.
Then why do we go out of the county?
The quote, the most recent vendor just became Compact certified in the last 24 hours. The, all the quotes that I received were from people through Purchasing's help and just generally searching on the Internet for various pricing. But it was a combination of working with purchasing and just vendors that I was familiar with on the Internet to come up with those figures.
Yvonne, did you check within the county? Because it's my understanding, these are pretty common, that any vendor might have it.
Yeah, we sent out about six or seven to all the vendors in the county and then we did some outside vendors and they came back the cheapest. They're on our NIGP code, government code, that they can give us pricing under anyone else. And as what Ernie's saying, I think it's MicroAdvantage, I believe.
MicroAdvantage.
It's, they're starting to join that program. At the time when we were doing it, they were not eligible for the program.
And MicroAdvantage is a local company?
Yeah. They're the ones that's handling our service contract right now.
And did you get a bid from them?
Well, we got to wait until, yeah, we did get a quote from them, but they were much higher. But now they're going, getting ready to join the NIGP code and then we'll be able to use them, but until then, they can't use those pricings.
Were they within the 10%? Were they much higher than that?
Three percent.
Uh, no, they weren't.
What?
Three percent. Local preference is three percent.
I'll try to get it up there.
But no, so if indeed that they do join, before we do the purchase order, we will use that company, we will use MicroAdvantage.
But we're voting on it now.
Yeah, what's-
You could always change companies before you put them in the system.
When they're membership effective, I mean, it's a matter of-
I spoke with, I spoke with John Nimble, the owner of MicroAdvantage, and he had a telephone conversation with Compact. He was told that he has certification required to provide this state pricing. He just doesn't have the letter in hand with his, with his number.
Is he going to get it by next week?
Yes.
Okay, then I think we should hold this 2341-9 until next week if it won't cause any problem to you, because you're going to have to come back if you want to change vendors anyway.
Well, absolutely. If we want to change vendors, we'll have to modify this resolution, so we can buy this locally by waiting a week, I suggest we do.
2349.
So we're going to put that one on hold?
Yes.
Okay. What else?
I don't know, anything else?
Well, the next ones were the computers for, for Community Development, and I, my question was, why didn't the figures match the transfers?
I think that Ron answered that the best he could. Okay, anything else? That's it?
I'll say it right position.
No, there is another one. Okay. Dan, you're on the carpet.
Recycled carpet.
Anyway, they're recycling containers for light bulbs. I just wanted you to explain a little bit what you're going to do with those and what they are, how they're going to be used.
Dan Bilmann, B-I-L-L-M-A-N, I'm the Solid Waste Director. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Dan.
The light bulb program has actually expanded over beyond what we thought we were going to do with it. We are taking in a lot more bulbs than we originally had thought we would.
Dan, where is that taking place?
Why is it taking place?
Where?
Oh, the maintenance department in this building is taking, taking care of the bulbs coming in. We're getting them from other departments around the county also. They're bringing the bulbs in, or the maintenance department's collecting them. Right now, what happens, these bulbs come in and we order these containers, cardboard containers that are shippable by UPS, common carrier, so on and so forth, and then they're disposed of, but we pay upfront for the transportation and the disposal fee when we get the boxes. We order the boxes from Granger Corporation and they're disposed of through Global. It's a, it's an outfit in, I believe, Massachusetts. We are, at this point in time, you have a question?
Didn't we do this last year?
Yeah.
Yes, this is just a continuation.
That's all.
But I thought maybe the public would be interested. It's kind of interesting to know that you're doing something with your light bulbs.
Well, we're also doing it with batteries, flashlight batteries.
But I mean, this is just what, within the county departments that we're doing with the light bulbs, like fluorescent lights, and it's not a public project.
No, it's not a public project, no, it's just something we're doing within, within the administration building and all the other outlining buildings in the county that are operated under the county offices.
That's all I wanted to make the public aware.
I might, I might add to you that we're looking into another system that will, should reduce our costs on this, on these bulbs by, actually, I'm not so certain that we can do it, but this company has sent us some literature, a container with a long tube on it, the tubes go down through this, the mercury and everything is contained, all the gases are contained within the barrel, and then just one barrel is sent out. So it's like a 55-gallon barrel rather than having like 20 cardboard containers.
Sounds good, except that the next step ought to be to take it out to the businesses in the community and stuff.
Well, we can do that with HHW Day.
Good.
Okay?
Well, but people throw light bulbs away other than just on household hazardous waste day.
Can we make these containers available to, say, for example, the schools or, I don't know about private businesses, but if it's possible, can we do that?
We can make them available, but that's something that probably each entity, like the schools, should take upon themselves. I don't think it's a county function.
Perhaps we could be the conduit to provide the information to them if they don't already have it?
And we, and we've done that, I mean, anytime anybody asks us for information on-
Well, but I'm suggesting that we don't wait till they ask us, okay? You know, if you have a good product, you want to advertise it, you don't waste it to be asked, right?
Well, that's just like the aluminum can containers?
Absolutely.
When I go into the schools and I've asked you for several of those containers to bring in with me, and it actually teaches the kids to recycle their aluminum cans and the schools are grateful for them. Some of them, they even put in the teachers' lounges for just the teachers, but it's, you know, one program, and I think this one's kind of similar.
And I, I agree with Commissioner Blair that we have to be out in the forefront, not just, we can't be paying for all these projects, but we can most certainly-
Let them know they're available.
Let them know they're available, yes.
Sometimes the information is helpful, sometimes people don't know that. I mean, I didn't know until you brought it to us, so I think that maybe there are other people who might not know it, too.
Right, and we do, when you go out to speak and we give you the rotating wheels for the schools, that's kind of stuffs on those rotating wheels if we give you an HHW wheel.
But there has to be a place for people to put those things.
That is correct.
That's closing the loop.
That's correct.
All right, thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
We have a motion in a second to approve the requisitions, and I would like to amend as the mover of that motion to accept number 234901, which is the Exchange Server, and put that on hold for next week.
Oh.
Is that agreeable with you? Thank you, okay.
What, I'm sorry, I didn't get that, accept it and put it on hold?
No, it is, well, the exception is on hold, so.
Oh, you mean make an exception? I thought you meant to accept, okay.
E-X, I'm going to, E-X, it's hard, accept and accept kind of go together, so I want to hold it till next week, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Basie. Aye.
Thank you.
Travel expenses.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Basie. Aye. Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Authorized various personal actions as indicated on the summary for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cardeswell would be having an executive session?
I don't have any issues for an executive session today, Commissioner.
And I move the summary sheet be approved as submitted.
Second. Discussion? Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Basie. Aye. Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Authorized compensatory time for Allen Whack Bailiff City of Lary Municipal Court in the amount of $401.50 to Children's County Stu.
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Basie. Aye. Authorized the release and payment of retainage to R.I. Construction Incorporated, Tiffin, Ohio, in the amount of $11,349.65 for work performed on the Peck-Wadsworth Road Bridge 0565. County engineer has indicated the work is complete and the contractor has submitted all the necessary paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Basie. Aye. Approve and enter into contracts between Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services and First Merit Bank. This will be for the automobile loan program Wheels to Work, allowing for the purchase of reliable transportation and automobile insurance for eligible low-income participants. Said contract is effective retroactive to November 1st, 2001, expiring June 30th, 2002 in the amount not to exceed $152,000, and authorized present to execute on behalf of the Board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Basie. Aye. Approve and enter into purchase of service contract between Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services and Lorraine County Children's Services for fiscal year 2002 for the Kinship Navigator Program. Said contract is effective retroactive to August 1st, 2001, expiring June 30th, 2002 in the amount not to exceed 53, excuse me, $53,000, and authorized present to execute on behalf of the Board.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Basie. Aye. Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Approve the 4D Contract Amendment Number One between Lorraine County Child Support Enforcement Agency and Lorraine County Clerk Courts to increase the unit rate of the contract from $6 per unit to $15 per unit to utilize the value of the contract by December 31st, 2001.
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead.
Discussion? Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Basie. Aye. Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Authorize Lorraine County Domestic Relations Court Juvenile Division to file applications for various fundings. $160,000 for the Ohio Department of Youth Services Juvenile Accountability Incentive Block Grant. This will provide a continuance of the Lorraine County Juvenile Detention Home Services due to cut of the 502 Subsidiary Grant from the state, to be provided by the Home Depot Corporation in the amount of $30,000. This grant will be used to gain funding for sex offender program, counseling, case consult, risk assessment supplies, and staff mileage.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Basie. Aye. Approve and enter into contract between Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services and Lary City School District to provide TANF eligible children and families to promote the goals of reducing and/or preventing teenage pregnancy and promoting the two-parent household. Said contract is effective retroactive to October 1st, 2001, expiring June 30th, 2002 in the amount not to exceed $60,000, and authorized present to execute on behalf of the Board.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Basie. Aye. Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise for a notice of public hearing to be held on Thursday, December 20th, 2001, at 10:00 a.m. This public hearing is a request by the Village of Wellington to apply to the Ohio Department of Development for funding under CDBG Economic Development Program in the amount of $227,781 for the expansion of World Way Corporation. This notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram on December 8, 2001.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Basie. Aye. Accept proposal for Medical Mutual of Ohio to be the third-party administrator for medical coverage, benefits to county employees effective January 1st, 2002.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Ms. Basie. Aye. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Reappoint Virginia Gaston as a member to the Lorraine County TB Clinic Board effective December 6, 2001, expiring December 5, 2004.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Basie. Aye. Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Instruct clerk to advertise notice to bidders for Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District Waste Tire Collection Program to operate four permanent waste tire drop-offs for residents within the jurisdiction of the district and operate permanent drop-offs and the one-day collection event for one-year contract period covering two thousand and two, which may offer an option of renewal for the second and third years. Notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram on December seventh and fourteenth, two thousand and one, and bids will be open January fourth, two thousand and two, the public hearing room at one-thirty p.m.
Since we have one year remaining, the option for one year remaining on the existing contract, I move that we reject this proposal to advertise for bids and continue with the final year of the contract that's available to us.
You got me at a loss. When was this contract originally signed? Before my time, or?
Yes.
Okay, so what, I mean, you're asking me to accept something I don't have?
Commissioner, there was a, my understanding of the issue was it was a three-year contract, and this was the second year that you're here, and we have an option for a third year. And Dan is here, and Commissioner Vacy's right, he can come to the podium and speak to the issue.
Mr. Bellman?
Your motion is allowed to be rejected.
To not advertise and to extend the contract for one year.
Not to extend, well, it's already, we already have a contract, correct?
To answer your-
We have an option, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Moore's question-
Incorrect terminology.
When the contract was signed, that was in March of two thousand. To bring you up to date, last year, we went out for bids again because there was a foul-up, and we only, we thought the pricing would get better, so we tried to get some other vendors to give us a price. Only one vendor sent a proposal in, and that vendor had some problems with licensing, with how he was going to do the program. There was two companies involved.
What was the name of that vendor?
Lad Trucking.
Lad?
Lad Trucking and H&amp;H Oil. That was the vendor that put the proposal in. COC did not put a proposal at that point in time, only because we had the wrong address and we had sent the paperwork to the wrong place.
I remember that.
But because of the fact that we had a problem with the paperwork from Lad Trucking, it was decided to renew the contract with COC for the second year, which was on the original contract that was made in two thousand. So this, this year, if you, if you don't want to go out for a contract, it is, it is a renewable option that commissioners do have. The reason I put it before you was that the industry has been changing quite a bit, and some of the shreds now are being able to be bought or sold at a much greater revenue source. So the pricing may come down. I have no idea who the players might be this year, whether we'll even get anybody else to participate, or want to participate.
So if we reject this, what we're doing is we're just continuing what was already accepted for how long? Another three years?
No, no, one year.
No, this would be-
Because you said it was a three-year, it was a three-year contract. You said we screwed up. I remember this in February, where there was bid, so does that three-year contract start in February, or were they already doing business a year before that?
We, at the time, we had, did the contract, we did a ninety-day extension from December to March.
Oh, okay.
So we could continue with our permanent sites.
Okay.
And that was with COC. And then we just, actually, we renewed the contract with COC last year. Had we, had we gone with-
If I reject them this one, we're just continuing this for one more year, right there.
Well, I think we need the authorization to do that, though, so that was why-
Had we had gone with Lad Trucking last year, we'd have probably saved my calculation between twelve-
Except that, Dan, we did not really have that option because of the prosecutor's opinion.
That's right.
Okay? And so there were, so that's not, although it might have saved us money, it was not exactly legal.
That's right, but looking back, I thought-
I'll second, I'll second your motion.
I bet there might be some money saved, so that's why it's before you today.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
So we got one more year with this kind. Are you going to work on it so we don't have issues like this for next year, when it comes before us?
Well, the issue next year will be, before you, the same thing it is today, that we will go out for-
Proper bids, without issues?
Rebid the tire contract, yes.
Thanks.
Madam Clerk? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Upstaying.
Thank you, Dan.
Authorize salary increase for Donald J. Rothgeri, clerk, Larry Municipal Court, effective January first, two thousand and two. This will increase his biweekly rate from one thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-three cents to one thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and sixty-five cents, which is the county's two-fifth share. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Authorize refund to Lorraine County title in the amount of two thousand, six hundred dollars for an incorrect conveyance fee. Property that was transferred was to Lorraine County Metro Parks, which makes this property exempt from any conveyance fee, and the auditor's office has reviewed and recommends approval. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Accept and journalize the due check appropriation and expenditure report as submitted by Lorraine County Treasurer, Lorraine County Prosecutor pursuant to ORC three-twenty-one point two-sixty-one for the year two thousand and one. Set amount of revenue generated to due check during the report period was three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, twenty dollars and twenty-three cents, and the estimate for the anticipated revenue for two thousand and two is three hundred and forty thousand. So moved. Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approve and enter into a loan agreement prepared by Lorraine County Community Development Department with Mr. Hugh Keating, eighty-five Coveland, Avon Lake, Ohio, in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars for the construction of a coastal erosion structure. OWDA account twenty-four-three-six-oh-one-two-five-oh-one-four-five-oh-one-oh-one has been allocated for said project and authorized present to execute on behalf of the board. So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Do we, Ron, did you want to comment just briefly on this for the benefit of anybody who might want to access this loan program?
Thank you, Commissioners. This is a program we initiated on behalf of those residents and property owners, and it can be a government property owner, along Lake Erie, and we initiated this program in nineteen ninety-eight. We have two contracts that have been reviewed and approved. We actually have, rather than asking for a general fund advance, we have actually received this money already. It is sitting in our coffers, and this is the authorization by, to allow the board to enter into that contract for the first one, and the dollar amount was two hundred and twenty-five thousand, or whatever it's written there. And this would get this program started, so the work could commence to protect shoreline of Lake Erie.
Very good. Questions?
Is this the second one we've done, or the first?
This is the first one that you've entered into the agreement. The other one, ODNR has approved and given us funding. We have not finished the necessary paperwork, but that work was done with their approval, and we will reimburse the property owner, and they are paying back in to, to us so that we can forward that money to ODNR. It's a loan to the property owner through our operation, our office, and in particular, Kathy Page is the contact person. If any residents along Lake Erie would like to, to check into this, but this is the first where we will be distributing money, but another one will follow soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Approve and enter into subdividers agreement between the Board of Commissioners and A&amp;A Developing for Heritage Ridge Estates Subdivision, Amherst Township. The developer Gregory Abraham and Timothy Abraham has provided a letter of credit for five hundred thousand dollars in liability insurance improvement estimate. County engineer has reviewed and recommends approval.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise to public on finding of no significant impact on the environment and notice to public of intent to request release of funds under Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four, as amended to be used for CDBG Economic Development Grant Loan Program in county revolving loan fund projects for World Way Corporation, seven-twenty Shiloh Avenue, Wellington, Ohio. This project is approximately two hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred dollars of FY-01 CDBG Ed funds and one hundred thousand dollars of RLF funds for the reconstruction of approximately two thousand, seven hundred and thirty linear feet of existing roadway and drainage improvements on Maple Avenue, Wellington, Ohio. Said notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram on December eighth, two thousand and one, and will allow a thirty-day comment period.
And this is the subject of our public hearing that we have advertised and have scheduled, correct? Okay, also moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Received petitions for annexation and schedule of the various public hearings. Thirty-seven point thirty-nine acres from Aleria Township to the city of Aleria. Attorney John J. Keyes Walker is acting as agent for petitioner. The county engineer has reviewed the revised map and description, and by report dated November twenty-seventh, two thousand and one, indicated the parcels contiguous and adjacent to the city of Aleria. This public hearing has been scheduled for Thursday, February fourteenth, two thousand and two, at ten-thirty a.m. Do you want me to continue with all of them? Please. Twenty-one point thirty-two acres from Aleria Township to the city of Aleria. Attorney Christine McIntosh is acting as agent for the petitioner. County engineer has reviewed the revised map and description of February fourth, dated November twenty-seventh, two thousand and one, indicated the parcels contiguous and adjacent to the city of Aleria. This public hearing has been scheduled for February fourteenth, two thousand and two, at eleven a.m. Thirty point thirty-seven acres from Aleria Township to the city of Aleria. Dr. Denny Lehman, vice chairman of the Church of the Open Door, is appointed agent. County engineer has reviewed the revised map and description, and by report dated November twenty-seventh, two thousand and one, indicated the parcels contiguous and adjacent to the city of Aleria. This public hearing has been scheduled for Thursday, February fourteenth, two thousand and two, at eleven-thirty a.m.
Mr. Anas, I'm assuming that the Board of Commissioners is operating under the existing Ohio Revised Code with respect to annexation petitions. Am I correct?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay, so that, all right, what's the pleasure for?
So moved.
That's why I get you guys to get here on Valentine's Day and see what I'm going to get.
No, it's what you're going to bring us. You're supposed to bring us candy and flowers.
Oh, okay.
Are you going to second that, Commissioner Vacy?
I take it you don't want to, so I guess I will.
Thank you very much.
Since this is just for the hearings.
Discussion. Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye. I want you to note that Commissioner Moore drew a heart on his, so he'll remember to bring us candy and flowers.
Amend Resolution Number ninety-eight-nine-five-eight, adopted December tenth, nineteen ninety-eight. This resolution is in relation to the Recorder's Equipment Special Fund, number two-eighteen. This amendment is intended to reflect inclusion into the resolution for authorization of number two-eighteen fund usage for calendar year two thousand and two thousand and one. Also moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Approve and enter into one-year maintenance agreement on behalf of Lorraine County Sheriff's Department and I-Tex Incorporated in the amount of six thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-one cents, effective retroactive to November first, two thousand and one, expiring October thirty-first, two thousand and two. This maintenance agreement is for Index Live Scan Fingerprinting System that was given to the Sheriff's Department by the Ohio Attorney General in nineteen ninety-eight, and authorized present to execute on behalf of the board. So moved. Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approve and enter into contract on behalf of Lorraine County Sheriff's Department to Open Software Solutions Incorporated, Greensboro, North Carolina, for the purchase and installation of a computer-aided dispatch system in the amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars, which includes installation, training, and ongoing maintenance from account zero-zero-one-oh-one-two-three-oh-one-four-four-oh-one-oh-eight, the computer system software, and Resolution zero-one-seven-thirty, adopted August second, two thousand and one, awarded this contract. Also moved. Second. Discussion.
Commissioner, Sheriff Stamatia is here. Would you like to comment on this, Sheriff?
Phil Stamatia, Lorraine County Sheriff. Good morning, Commissioners and everybody else. Obviously, this is the resolution that was passed, passed previously, that we were working on this computer-aided dispatch system, which will modernize the Sheriff's Department's computer system. This is the last leg of what we needed, because we already had our record room and our jail management that were already computerized, and this will do the law enforcement, which will be beneficial to the deputies and the citizens alike. So this is, this is a, and this maintenance agreement is for two years, I can tell you that also. So it is a two-year maintenance agreement, including with that price.
Thank you. Questions for the sheriff? Madam Clerk? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Sheriff.
Thank you.
Approve account transfer of one million, five hundred thousand dollars from the general fund, account zero-zero-one-oh-one-two-zero-zero-one-four-four-zero-four-oh-one, to account zero-zero-one-oh-one-four-nine-zero-one-four-nine-two-six-oh-five, which would allow payment of one point five million dollars from appropriations transferred from unused construction monies to the Commissioner's allocations account. This is in conjunction with Resolution zero-one-two-eleven, dated March first, two thousand and one, and authorizes the payment of one point five million dollars to National City Bank as local match for the newly created county court authority. So moved. Second. Discussion.
We get our money from the state?
As soon as we ante up, we'll be able to get our money from the state.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
We won't let them off the hook, Commissioner.
Okay.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, county administrator?
I only have one piece of good news, and it's very quick, quick. Last week, we received, I reported to you, we received about four hundred thousand dollars in rapid response, dollars from the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services over at the former ETA. I'm pleased to tell you, we also just received additional funding from them that now brings the total up to half a million dollars that we've received this calendar year, and that's because Mr. Ogul's been applying for those funds over there. And so that's good for, for our dislocated workers, so we can provide better services to them.
Fantastic.
And with that, I have nothing additional this morning.
Thank you.
Mr. Anas, can I crosskey?
No.
Commissioners report. Commissioner Vacy?
Yeah, I just wanted to show you some of the photographs that I took, well, at the NACO conference. I brought back a lot of information, some for the Human Service Department, for many of our different departments. I re-packaged them up and sent them off to the departments, and a lot of them I want to speak with Mel Health and some of the others. But this one here really took my attention, and this was the homeless center that they have out there. It's not really a homeless center, it's a campus, and it was super. But how this all came about was Miami was sued because the police department there, or their police officers, were taking the homeless clothing and all their belongings and burning them. So one of the attorneys defended one of the homeless people and won the suit. So the county had to come up with something. So what the county did was to give the land, and then they went out and businesses contributed. But this is a picture of the front of the campus. It's like one big square, and when you go in, there's security. And it was just amazing to me. And here's some of the pictures that I took, which I had like two of each. But this was a part of the grounds, and that's the building. And they have a beauty shop, they have a kitchen, they have childcare after and before school. And here's the facilities with childcare. Now, this is the first one that they put up, and they're going for two more, they're putting two more up. But the rest of the maintenance is funded by businesses, and they also had security when you go in. They have a medical center where these people are given physicals before they can stay in, in the campus. And they have an area that's for female, one for male, and one for families. People are allowed to stay here, I believe it was like ninety days. They help them get jobs. It was really mind-boggling, all that they had to offer for these, these people. And here's a picture of their, their kitchen. Here's the playground. Here's their daycare. And that's part of the, another section of the outside.
How many people can they house at one time?
I don't know, but it was quite large. It was like a whole block, and this is the beauty shop and barber shop. It was a whole community within this one area. And this is outside the kitchen. Anyway, I wanted to share this with people here in the county that take care of our homeless. And then there's some other information that they can check into, too. Here you go, Betty. We also turned there, one shop was, which I was really impressed with. The building seemed to me about practically the size of our jobs and family service building, and it was all open. You had families coming in, there were women with their kids looking at the computers and checking on jobs. They had an area where they had clothing for people that didn't have proper clothes to, to apply for a job. They had accessories, shoes, that people, that they just gave to people to go out and apply for jobs. I wasn't really impressed with their human service department because their caseworkers worked behind locked doors, and, and they had the key locks with punch numbers. Wasn't impressed with that at all. But these other areas were really interesting. And it was good networking with county commissioners from all over the United States. That's all I have to share today.
Thank you very much. Very interesting.
Looks like we provide most of the assistance. The only difference here is we don't provide the overnight stay, it looks like. I'm looking at the account that they've done. It looks like everything we, it looks like we, Lorraine County provides most of this except for the overnight facilities and to have a facility like that. So there's something maybe we can add, maybe it's something we can enhance what we already have.
That's why I want to talk with the director of whoever's doing this, and these people stay here for ninety days, and I don't know if our, our facility works with the one-stop to get the jobs for these people and the training. I'm sure that they do. Anyway, here's the pictures, and here's the information, if anybody would like to look at it. That's all I have.
Commissioner Moore?
Yeah, I want to talk, really address something to Jim and the board to see, again, how they feel about the Board of Elections. There's a lot of issues coming up pretty soon. Commissioner Vacy brought it back from one of her conferences, we've talked about it, the possibility of maybe taking the county and becoming more in line with what might have to come down, and maybe take the lead in the state. But I think it was proposed to this board before my time, maybe automating the Board of Elections so that we can see the results within four hours. I mean, I've seen some of the presentations. The fact is, it's going to cost quite a bit of money to do so, and I think the first step to do that, in order to make it affordable for this county, is to combine the Board of Elections. We're paying over eight thousand dollars a month for two buildings. Now, either we combine them, or what I'd like to do is ask our county administrator, talk, because our lease has expired in six months. We negotiated, he successfully negotiated both contracts to expire at the same time. I think now's the time to, you know, I would not mind even renegotiating the contract, leave them in the two offices, if we can get him to negotiate something affordable, so that we can afford to maybe move forward with electronic voting, if that's what we're going to be mandated to do. So the bottom line here is, before we can decide on where we're going to go with the electronic voting, if that's where we're going to go, we have to see if we can afford it, and with the times the way they are, I think the first step is, whether or not we're going to combine them, we're not getting anything back from the Board of Elections, since they have to decide that. So I think since we have, we've negotiated the leases, I think it'd be appropriate for Mr. Cortez to revisit where we're at today in those two facilities and see if we can get a reduced rent. If not, then I think we have to decide in the next couple of weeks on whether or not we're going to have to move. I think now's the time, because we have six more months of rent. If not-
I agree with you. I think we have to, did you talk with, with the board? I know that you did quite a while ago, or someone did, and they were supposed to get back with us. I wasn't at the meeting that they came here, and it was discussed right here in the board meeting, I believe, but I was absent that day.
Oh, we discussed it, and we asked them to come back with us with some options, and I think that's the last you've heard from them, isn't it? And I think that's the last you've heard from them, isn't it?
I have corresponded with the Chairman of the Board of Elections on two occasions and have not received any response.
I think we're gonna have to move along on it. But here's some information, too, from NACO legislate... From their bulletin. Election bill approved. The House Administration Committee unanimously approved a bipartisan election reform bill, three-two-nine-five, on November the fifteenth. The legislation is supported by Republican House leadership and is expected to be scheduled for a floor vote early in December. So it looks like election reform and new machinery, and there's a long list of things in this reform bill. So I think we're gonna have to be prepared for that, too.
I hope one of them is money.
Well, Commissioner...
There is some money, yeah.
To respond to your issue on money, there is an issue right now that looks like it's going to gain popular support to provide money to the states, probably in the form of block grants, where they'll be funding... Funneled down to the county level for holding elections. The last piece of legislative update that I viewed indicated that we have the potential of gaining up to about six thousand dollars per precinct next year in the county, which would bring us in about a million-three or a million-four.
Million-two.
Million-two. We have about plus two-hundred-and-sixty-eight, two-hundred-and-seventy?
Two-hundred-and-sixty.
Many?
Two-hundred-and-sixteen precincts.
Is that all?
I called yesterday, and the number, as I recollect, was two-hundred-and-forty-six.
Two-hundred-and-forty-six. Okay, well, we're all poking around a little bit at it, but which will generate us some significant dollars. We had to have match money available to access those monies. The Budget Director and I huddled, and we have squandered... Squandered... We have... That wasn't very good. We have... We've been able to extract the necessary dollars from our...
You set them aside.
We set them aside.
Thank you.
From the new budget that we're gonna propose to the Board in the coming weeks, to make sure we have match money available to access those funds.
Okay, but we're still... Based on those numbers, because we've had this discussion, we're still gonna be short roughly maybe two million dollars.
At least.
Conservatively.
Well, I'm just saying, okay? Now, debt service on two million dollars is pretty much what we're paying in rent on the buildings right now. We have some empty buildings in this county that we own that we wouldn't have to pay rent. So it wouldn't cost the taxpayers any money if we would combine the Board of Elections, put them into a facility that we own, maybe dump a few hundred thousand dollars to update it to make sure it's okay. And then guess what? It didn't cost the taxpayers, except maybe for a half a million dollars for our match, to automate this county and be one of the first in the state to do so, and not be told to do it, but be proactive in that reactionary in case we have no money three years from now, when they force us to do this. Plus, we have an off-election this year.
We do?
Well, someone's running up here, and...
What did you say? I want to know what you meant by an off-election.
Well, it's not a presidential...
You're not running.
I'm not running.
But it's a gubernatorial election.
Yeah, but what you got, though, is not...
And that's not off.
You're lucky. You don't have as many people voting off. I have... We have everybody running. What I run?
I just wondered what you meant by the terminology of off. That was all. I just wanted you to find that term.
Has nothing to do with the candidate. Now I gotta be politically correct. Sorry, I didn't mean to say that.
I think gubernatorial election is a very important election.
What I'm saying is, you're not gonna have the participation, unfortunately. You're not gonna have the participation. How's that? But I think it'd be easier if we're gonna do something like this, and we make the decision in the next ninety days, if that's the case. Because I think we have to know the next thirty days if there is an issue that we have to decide what to do with the Board of Elections first, because we can't do anything until we know what they're gonna do. If they're just gonna stay where they're at, and we're just continually paid that kind of money for rent, then I don't see how we can afford to automate.
I think what we pay for rent, we should be buying or putting that money into a county-owned building. I felt that way ever since I took office. And I really think that instead of renting or even talking about continuing to rent, I think we should look into either purchasing or extending where we have the Cook Building, because we do own the land, which is what, two, two-and-a-half acres right next to it? And we can extend a facility there, which is centrally located between O'Leary and Lorraine, the two largest cities.
Commissioner Vacy, I like the location concept, but the land isn't contiguous to the building.
Well, here, let me stop. Let me stop right here.
Yes, it is.
The storage place is directly behind the building. The land is contiguous to the parking lot.
Well, that's good enough. It attaches to the land that the county...
Well, the land is contiguous, but the building is set back, so we couldn't extend the building onto the property.
We can put another building up there for that.
Here, let me make a...
Even a pole barn, which is not very expensive.
Let me make a real simple... Let me simplify this. You can't do anything until we decide, number one, are we gonna renegotiate, or are we going to move? And that's... I need to find out.
And we need the Board of Elections to agree with whatever. I mean, we have to...
I don't think we're gonna find that out. I think the first step we have to do is renegotiate the leases we have. If we cannot come to some mutually accepted terms, then I think we're gonna have to have another discussion regarding what we just talked about. I think step one is very simplistic. Talk to the landlord, see if he's willing to negotiate. If he is, then we're not forced to do anything except automate. And you can move those machines wherever we move, if three years or if we do a new lease for three or four years, and it helps cover the savings, helps pay for the automation, then it makes sense for the taxpayers to do this. That's how I see it.
Okay, two issues. First...
No, it's real simple.
It is very simple.
One issue, will they renegotiate that? If not, then it's the Board of Elections versus the Commissioners. Am I not right on that?
You are partly correct.
Oh, you're...
The landlord, who do you want to negotiate with? The landlord to reduce the rent? Is that what you're talking about? Why would you want to rent in the first place?
Okay. No, because we're... Well, because that's...
Apparently, it's not quite as simple as you thought, Commissioner Moore.
The government is never that simple, although it should be, and I agree with Commissioner Moore there.
What you got is you got two entities.
Recognize that the Board of Elections, under statute, under code, is... Has every right to decide their location and enter into that lease agreement with spitzers. Now, I go...
But you need to go the next step, okay? That agreement... Does that agreement need... We just need to say this. It doesn't need to be approved by us, but we have to fund it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Am I correct?
You're correct.
All right. Why just add that ingredient, because it's very important.
However, in the past, the Commissioners have ceremoniously signed off... Ceremonially signed off on that lease, but they do not need your...
Do they have the authority to sign that lease themselves?
Yes, they do.
Okay, that's what we learned when we did...
Right. Now, so I will do what Commissioner Moore suggested, and I think it's a great plan.
No, I just wanna make sure the support of the Board. That's why I don't wanna just tell you to do stuff.
Right, right.
I wanna make sure, is that okay to have them start there first, and then we can...
I have a team concept here.
Well, there's no line.
Oh, God!
I would like a team concept with the Board of Elections. I would like all of us to be in agreement with whatever we decide to do. And I would hope that they are against renting, because I just don't think... We need rent receipts in exchange for our money. I think we need property in exchange for our money.
Well, I agree, but there's a compromise there, which is electronic voting can be covered with a reduction in rent on buildings that have probably... I don't wanna go into the business aspect of it, but I think there's an opportunity maybe to keep the relationship with the Board of Elections, who doesn't want to... Who don't wanna move. If they wanna stay in those two spots and wanna be funded, then let's reduce it.
Did you talk to them? I don't know. I don't know their perfect.
They were in here. It goes very obvious from the lack of response from our county administrator that he's actually asked, correct? Your memos are pretty well detailed, I think.
They were pointed.
They were pointed. And since we're not hearing a response, then I think we need to at least let him start negotiating with the Board and the landlord. Does that make sense? Is that what you're looking?
I would say so, because...
That's first, and everything else is gonna come later, I think.
I think you were talking about the potentiality of issuing bond to make up any shortfall in additional capital that was needed for the electronic voting.
Was it that?
I thought you said that. You said that the reduction would pay for debt service on a two-million-dollar bond.
Correct, okay, yeah.
Right? I'm glad to hear you say that, because I don't believe that we're gonna have sufficient cash to pay for it without a bond.
Well, I don't think two million is gonna be enough for the project either.
Well, I think the two million coupled with the one point two or three from the state and the twenty-five percent match that we put aside would give us somewhere in the area of about almost four million dollars.
Right, which is pretty close to what we're gonna be...
But pointing out, and once you know, points out, I don't believe that the budget next year is gonna support a cash payment of available funds to pay for that next year.
No, but what we do is, we're getting state money, our local match of five hundred, and then we bond out the two million, and if we get a rent reduction to cover that...
Exactly.
Then the budget's fine. That's kinda where I wanna go, since we're in a public hearing, we just negotiated with this guy on TV. He knows where we're coming from, but we still need the assistance of the Board of Elections to agree to that, don't you think?
Okay, I understand the position of the Board, if that's the position of the Board.
Just giving maybe Jim some direction, since he hasn't heard anything in a couple months from his correspondent. Because we had to do something, or we don't wanna be here in May, and also the rent's gonna be doubled on us.
Find out where the Board stands first, maybe they've had a change of heart.
It's Christmas, anything's possible.
God bless. Is there any other...
But let me do this, if I may, please, because I will do exactly what Commissioner Vacy said, but let's also have Plan B. Should the Board's position on the matter not changed... Can I have Plan B now, so I don't have to come back and talk about this?
Well, I don't... Do we know what Plan B is?
Commissioner Moore is presenting a plan. I guess that could be...
No, my Plan B is, basically, if they don't wanna move, then Plan B is, we have to renegotiate. And if we're gonna renegotiate, and everybody's gonna want electronic voting, which is that's what they're looking at, then we use that as our negotiating tool. But unfortunately, when you negotiate, it's better to go and do executive session and talk like this in a public forum, than conceive over time.
Is it that they don't want to move, or that they want two locations, one for the D and one for the R?
Commissioner Vacy, I really can't... The political aspects of it, I can't speak to. I think that they firmly believe that the taxpayers of Lorraine County are best served with two locations in each of the larger cities in the county. That point would make crystal clear in their presentation here, which you weren't here to...
And they're not satisfied with the central location between the two major cities?
I don't believe that they think that they would provide the best service to the taxpayers of Lorraine County in a centralized location.
Even if we offer them some warehousing for all that equipment?[1560.66]